You did such a wonderful job, I can go home. Thank you so much. What I'd like to do, since here you introduced us, is tell you first of all, a little bit about the League of Women Voters. We are a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) state political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, holds public meetings to present and discuss local and state issues, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League started in 105 years ago in New York. I bet you know why that happened? Anybody? Women had the right to vote. And in 1928, we started in Colorado. There are 850 local and state affiliates. The League is one of America's most trusted community-based organizations. We envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Membership in the League is open to all women and women of voting age. You notice we have one man with us tonight. Kirk loves being surrounded by women, but he probably has male friendships as well. And we accept members of all political parties and unaffiliated voters. The League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. With that being said, I'd like to go over the rules of the forum tonight. All of these candidates had the rules sent to them. They read them, agreed with them, signed to them, and returned them to me. But for all of us in the audience, I'd like to go over those again. This evening, we have a forum, not a debate, with the moderator asking the candidates to respond to questions. Questions will not be provided ahead of time and will come from the audience. Can you see, we've got a bunch so far? Let's look at it more over there. All candidates will be asked to respond to the same question. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, one minute to respond to each question, and two minutes for a closing statement. We will instruct, enforce these time limits. The moderator will be responsible for enforcing the time limit. That's me. And respectful engagement. Hate speech will not be allowed. The moderator will not allow speakers to interrupt one another. The moderator has the authority to interrupt proceedings if speakers violate forum rules or stray from the subject of the questions presented. The moderator of this forum is me, Kathleen Jensen, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Adams County. The order for the opening statements will be determined by a random drawing just prior to the start of the forum. The order will be revised for closing statements. Candidates will alternate as to who goes first in answering questions. The moderator will indicate which candidate will answer. The League will solicit questions from the audience. Questions will be screened by the League for duplication, decorum, and level of public interest and provided by the moderator. We may not have time for other questions, so questions not asked during the forum will be shared with the candidates afterwards via email. That's why we have where you signed in your name and your email address, so if we don't get to your question, I will type them all up and send them to these candidates and they will respond when they can. Candidates may not address questions or remarks to other candidates. All questions come from the audience. Candidates may not use any type of prompts. Speaking from notes is allowed, but the notes may not be shown to the audience. All electronic devices, except the devices candidates use for the forum, must be turned off during the forum. Please mute your cell phone. And that goes for all of us. Please mute your cell phones. No photographs, no campaign banners or signs are allowed inside or outside the building. A table will be provided for campaign literature, and I saw that out in the hallway, so I'm sure to take their literature. All literature must lie flat on the table and must be no larger than eight and a half by 14 inches. Please take the remaining literature with you when you leave. Sponsors of the win are not responsible for returning of campaign material. So that was a lot of rules we're going to follow, and they all agreed to do this. So, that's our good thing. Alright, at this time, we're going to ask the candidates for their opening remarks. They can tell us their name, what order at large they represent, and then elude themselves. So, we are going to start with Renee Miller Chacon.
She's not here.
She's not here. And we're going to start in a minute. Joanna Sandoval.
Hi, everyone. You're okay?
Okay. Pull it up there. As close as you can.
Alright. Everyone here? Thank you so much for being here. I'm Joanna Sandoval. I'm running for City Council Ward 3, and I'm excited to be here. A little bit about myself. I'm a mom of five, a wife, and I am a community leader. I have expertise in economic development, government contracting, and small business consulting. And my desire is to really make this a cohesive community, one that works for everybody, and be able to give my expertise in the areas of economic development and ultimately bring individuals together. I have been on the board for our metro district, Potomac Arms, for the last eight and a half years, and I've done, I would say, a pretty good job at that. I've worked really hard at engaging with all homeowners and being representative of everyone that lives in my community and being able to be responsive to their needs and really help with lowering the taxes in our area, which happens through being able to refinance the bonds for our metro district, and we were able to pull out $2 million and reduce the taxes. And so, we have $2 million in the bank account, which we're going to be able to use for infrastructure. And so, we're very, very excited. And right now, we're in the midst of polling our community so that we can get the feedback of what they would like to see, whether that's a pool, or a clubhouse, or if that's hopefully a coffee shop that mirrors something to what Reunion has, an area where we can create community within our space. And I have been a volunteer.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jose Barriola.
Well, good evening. Thank you for being here and for the sponsors. My name is Jose Barriola, and I am running for Carmen City Ward 1. I've been in Carmen City since 1983, when my parents came. My dad was a Union Railroad worker for Pacific Railroad and landed in Carmen City. And so, he still lives in the same house I grew up. I've been here my whole life. I went off to college, came back, and not going anywhere. Super proud of my son, who's a ninth grader at Adams City High School. I live in the Bell Creek area. I did a term of council from 2017 to '21, and then lost the reelection. And it was a good time to reflect of what I wanted to do. And I tell folks that I'm an educator. That's what I do for a living. And when you look at education and service, and it goes hand in hand with community council, with serving you guys, right? So, why I'm running is to really look at the ward. I was on council when we started the conversations of redistricting. And I truly believe all our wards should be like Ward 1. A little bit of the core, a little bit of the northern range, right? So you see the whole city and what it does and how diverse and wonderful it is. You know, I've been talking to a lot of residents and business owners and stakeholders, and I truly believe Carmen City needs consistency right now. They need something consistent. They want to know what's going on, right? And it's not going to change at the last minute. And so, why I'm running is just to go back, using my expertise as an educator, former city council member. I'm a father, a husband, son, and a long-life Carmen Cityian that knows the core, but also has lived in the northern range since 2011 in Bell Creek and sees the great possibilities that we have as a city, right? So, yeah, again, thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Michelle Lee.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lee. Let me turn this off, so we can hear you.
Look it up.
Hello, can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Dion Lee. I believe in the power of community engagement and the need to openly address racism and equality and public safety in our community. My platform will be used for our most vulnerable citizens, those who have no voice, so they can speak up and be heard. So many people are asking me, "What if I lose?" I thought I'd just answer that question publicly. If I lose, my answer is simple. I will return to my blessed life, continue to build my faith and work, and working to keep myself better and our community. The fact that I've been asked this question shows me change is truly needed. I am committed to making that change happen. I want to be clear. There is no high-paying salary for this position. I am truly running for the people. I have over 30 years of public service, speaking, advocating for the most vulnerable population. I am truly doing this because of my passion for working with people and the community. To be, because I want to be the leader that I have been waiting to see. Okay? So my commitment to growing Carmen City is strong. I plan to expand our residential community by working closely with both builders, fostering developments, and stability. I plan to partner with Carmen City to expand its existing business and contract with new ones to support job... Bullshit.
Brian Kiefer.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to be here this evening. My name is Brian Kiefer, and I'm running for City Council at large, because I believe that the decisions in city council should be made with residents in mind and not outside interests. Over the past several years, I've served as the planning commissioner for Carmen City, as well as the community, I'm sorry, as well as the president of my neighborhood metro district, where I've worked to tackle tough issues like high property taxes and accountability for developers. That experience has shown me how complicated things, I'm sorry, how complicated these challenges can be, but also how important it is to stand firm for people who live here. Our growing city is growing rapidly, and with that comes real opportunities, but also big profit responsibilities. Growth has to be matched with roads that work, schools that aren't overcrowded, safe neighborhoods, and development that adds value instead of burning taxpayers. I believe growth that makes sense for people of Carmen City. I believe in growth that makes sense for Carmen City and the people who call it home here. What I bring to this role is the willingness to listen, to dig into the details, and to fight for fairness and transparency. I'm not running to advance a political career. I'm running because I live here. I raised my family here, and I want to make Carmen City's future shaped, I want to make Carmen City's future shaped by its residents. Tonight, I look forward to sharing my vision and, most importantly, hearing from you. Thank you.
Laura Young.
Hi, I'm Laura Young, and I'm running for City Council, no duh, at large. That is the reason we're all here. I moved here with my family when my son was nine months old, and just this year, he celebrated his 21st birthday. We found Carmen City on accident. We were looking for a bigger home, more bank for our buck, for a neighborhood that our kids could be safe and run and play, and good schools, and we found exactly that. And even through all of life's twists and turns, even though we came here on accident, I stayed here on purpose. I love this community. I grew up and chartered in this community. My kids grew up here in this city, and I made friends here. And not only that, but I've committed the better part of my career in Carmen City. I worked for Community Up With Partnership, and we helped open the Reunion Coffee House. I'm currently the executive director of the Addams 14 Education Foundation, where we develop tomorrow's talent through teacher grants, student scholarships, and a leadership Carmen City program. And I see a few alumni here. So, the reason that I'm running for City Council is I really care about where our city is going and how our city is growing. I've talked to many, many residents, people who live here who are concerned about affordability, who are concerned about rising taxes, about safety on their streets, infrastructure. And what I really believe about what we can do here in Carmen City and what I can do as a city leader is bring my leadership and my experience to a thriving Carmen City.
Thank you. Stephanie Chivio.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is such an important part of the democratic process, so thank you for being here. Again, my name is Stephanie Chivio. I'm running for City Council at large. I am a mother. Have a son who graduated from Prairie View High School, a legal professional, adjunct professor, and also a nonprofit executive. I'm a first college, first-generation college graduate, and I've been born and raised in Colorado. I come from a family that has had to work hard for everything we have. Sometimes, we've had to lean on family, friends, and the community just for a hand up. Our sense of community here in Carmen City is what makes our city beautiful. The working class and middle class are the backbone of our community, and I want to make sure that we are always, we always have a place and can afford to live here. As someone who knows firsthand how much a little bit of help goes a long way, I've made and committed my life to serving our community. I currently serve as the president of the Rocky Mountain Paralegal Association, where I've led statewide efforts to bridge the access to justice gap. I have participated in various community events, such as Habitat Build Days, work a lot in pro bono legal clinics to help families who unfortunately cannot afford the expense of legal services. I'm running because I see the challenges in our community and with our families. I'm running, I'm right here with you. My deep legal experience, my ability to look at things through an equitable lens, and community involvement will allow me to step in and engage and deal with these things with pragmatic solutions for our challenges. Thank you. Thank you.
Allende, everyone.
So sorry.
Two minutes to tell you my life story. I'll skip two of those.
You up? Go ahead.
I've done it already.
Is working, go down there.
Sorry. Young, Alexander, or Alexander?
Young.
Alexander. Was this Alexander?
You know, one of the things I've noticed about Carmen City, I've been here about 20 years. Probably one of the friendliest cities I've ever lived in. And that's including San Antonio, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Hollywood, and a few others. Next bubble marked 60 years since I got out of local setup's army. Nothing glamorous. After basic, I spent the rest of the three years behind, when I always refer to it as an armored plate and desk. In those years after getting married, went to college, got a bachelor's science degree, I considered myself a writer. I wrote some novels, all of which were not published. So, make it clear. But even here, I'm sitting between two of the nicest, friendliest people you'd ever want to meet. And that's why I decided to run for the City Council. In Southern California, I was a nightclub promoter. And not me, the owner of the Silver Bullet told me, "You're the best in the business." The Silver Bullet doesn't sound familiar. It's a country worship club that uses it still in the weeds. All these years now, actually, I've gotten in trouble filming communities. But one of the things that I want to say, why am I running for this office? Like I said, I've seen a lot of people who have a lot of experience. And I just wanted to help out, like I said, with the friendly people, nice people. I used the mistake, the state, the "Don't make a mistake" quote for Jay. First time I used that was in River School. I ran for the guy who was a flag up and down the pole. I won that election, and I got to run the flag up and down the pole for an entire semester. Now, I'm looking to do four years here, surfing all the venues. And one last, before she starts going, can that light appear? I'm really happy to see so many people here interested in this office.
Thank you. Allende, it's your turn.
Hello. By being here, you're showing your interest, that you care about the city, and I'm honored to be a part of that conversation. My name is Alejandro De Leo. I am running for City Council at large. I have a son, a brother, a friend, a Carmen City resident, and a Colorado lifelong citizen. Carmen City is growing fast, and I believe we need leadership that prioritizes safe neighborhoods, responsible growth, and strong support for families and small businesses. I'm here to listen to you and to make sure Carmen City's future works for not just every, not just for me, but for everybody here. I look forward to our discussion tonight. Thank you.
I'm good, I mean, uh... I know, Ms. Catherine, I'm sorry, it's, I'm just, what do you have?
Lucy Molina.
I had, I originally had declined the invitation, so I just showed up. I'm glad you talked about filming, because I'm also a film. We're here with the film school too. Is it my turn now?
Yes.
Alright. Sorry. Okay. Two minutes, Scott. You guys know that's not enough time for me. Please check Google Lucy Molina and find out all about me. I'm sure you guys know me, because I'm here too. I am really thankful to the ladies, especially. Boys, yous are cool too, for stepping it up. I'm very, this is my third run. Lucy Molina from Carmen City. You can check it out. I'm pretty sure a lot of people know Ward 1. Pero pues yo soy Lucy Molina de Carmen City. Where our council just passed a climate emergency. Si se puede. I know what it's like to fight for my life. I live next to the biggest blurb and the eyesore of the state of Colorado. We know it's a sticky, sticky situation, no doubt. A Mexican-American, the first-born child of Jose Andresa Molina. I hope I have enough time. You guys stress me. And I'm the first to graduate from my family. You know, we are mothers, fathers, teachers, chefs, lawyers, doctors, roofers, farmers, truckers, entrepreneurs, and artists. Even elected officials. I'm a puppet servant already. I am honored to serve, to be serving along with the board members of the Addams 14 District here in Adams County. The Addams 14 District has been for years fighting the privatization of education. Guys, that's how I got involved. Protective privatization of education and fighting environmental justice. I know the needs of my community. I've been here a long, long time. I don't have a lot of time here. Two minutes, 20 seconds left. But I will be here. I will be here three minutes. You guys want to, they give us two minutes here, but I'm going to give you whatever time you have up there with the camera. I want to hear your voice. I already know what I've got going on. You guys, check it out, please. But I want to hear from you. So give me your three minutes on video with the Colorado Media School. And this is internship hours, and this is speaker vote. Thank you so much. Thank you, candidates. We know a lot about you tonight. That's great.
You still have two more. Jennifer Allen Thomas.
Can I take release time, please? Get in here. So I got something for you too.
Okay. Jennifer Allen Thomas and Kristi Douglas.
Sorry. Okay, Jennifer.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Jennifer Allen Thomas. I'm a registered nursing family nurse practitioner, and I proudly say that I, my, I'm proud to say that I am Carmen City-made, Carmen City-proud. I have lived in the entire, the same house that my parents moved in in 1969. So, my father was retired Air Force, and I have been in the same house. I am a proud former City Council member. I served for four years on City Council, and during those four years, two of those years, I was appointed the mayor pro tempore by the former mayor Benjamin Hughesman. So, I want to get back involved and represent all the residents of Carmen City. I was for Ward 2 before. This time, I want to represent all of the residents at Carmen City, and that's why I'm running at large. I want to get back to the residents, beat their voice, address their concerns. So that's why I'm continuing to get back and involve in council. My father served nine years on City Council. And I want to get back and be the voice for the residents of Carmen City. I worked for the state of Colorado as an investigator for the Board of Nursing and the Medical Board. So, it's in my blood to give back and get to the heart of things, so that's why I'm trying to get back on City Council. I'm also proud to say I'm a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Order of Eastern Star Elector Number 16 and Syrian Port Number 40. So, I have different leadership positions in all the organizations that I'm in. So I want to get back involved and be the voice for the residents at Carmen City and represent everyone. Thank you for being here. And Kristi Douglas.
Hi, everyone. Everyone. I didn't really want to be here tonight, if you want to know the truth.
Neither.
But I want to tell you that I'm here out of respect for all of you. The reason why I want to continue to run for City Council is because of all of you who are in the audience. Together, we can make this city great. There is so much to do here. We're at a crossroads, and we can either keep going down the same path or we can go down the path to greatness. And I believe that if we all work together, that we can make that happen. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you all so much for coming out.
Alright, did I get everybody this time? Good. Alright, now we start our questioning. Our first question is, "How do you define democracy? How do you plan to preserve democracy in Carmen City?" And our first responder will be Jose.
Alright, thanks. Thank you for that question. You know, I think democracy is working together with everybody, right? All stakeholders, whether it's residents, business owners, All stakeholders, whether it's residents, business owners, small business owners, landowners, developers, the educational institutes in our cities. And I think that's how you save democracy, or keep democracy going, is having everyone at the table, right? And working together, I think that's key. And starting off with the conversation, right? We're in a time where people don't want to talk if we don't have the same views. You know, we have to come together and listen to one another, especially at the local level in Commerce City. We have to know what's going on in the North and the South.
Thank you. Michelle. Michelle, wait. Sure. How do you find, define democracy? How do you plan to preserve democracy in Commerce City?
I see it as everyone getting an equal opportunity to vote and be a part of Commerce City. I feel like we need to change policy to limit the amount of times that we can run, so that we can all gain new perspective each time, each, for every four-year period that we have. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you. Jake. Brian.
Yeah, so democracy to me is everyone being able to have their voice heard by your elected leaders. It's not me that's up there making the decisions for you, it's you letting me know what you'd like me to do. That's how I treat the situations I currently am leading for. How I plan to preserve that for Commerce City is through listening to you, engaging with you, meeting with you, and having you have a real voice in what's said. And it's not just being pushed through by specialists or people who have a large voice so that I can take that for you. Thank you.
Brian. Lauren.
I'm Lori Young. The question was, how do you preserve and define democracy? I see democracy happening in this room right now. The number of our citizens who've come out to hear us speak, and all of us candidates who have been nervous and fretting all day because we want to be honest with you, we want you to know where we stand, and that's a vulnerable and hard thing. But the truth is, you have a right to know where we stand. And we preserve democracy by continuing to keep the lines of communication open with all of you, with all of our citizens, with all of the stakeholders, and with each other. If we remain curious and open and communicate, we are going to preserve democracy in Commerce City.
Thank you. Stephanie.
So, again, Stephanie Chavero, running for city council at large. Democracy means to have the voice, right? And we put leaders in positions so that way we represent the voice, right, of the citizens, of all of the stakeholders in our community. That's across the board. That's developers, that's, you know, anybody who has any, you know, investment in our community. And the way that we preserve that is that we continue to have respectful conversations, come to the table, and come up with solutions to move our city forward. So that way, we're actually, you know, making progress and doing things that are in the best interest of everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro.
Democracy is a system where everybody's voice is heard, where everybody has a chance to direct where their government is headed. In order to preserve democracy, we, we've already done, in order to preserve it, you have to show up to any need, speak with your representatives, let them hear your voice, let them know what you think. And if they don't represent you, then it's up to you to get them out of, out of the position that they're currently in. And I'm going to be representing all of you as the council member at large. And in order to do so, I would like to speak with each and every one of you tonight. Thank you.
Lucy.
Fight corruption. Stand up to corruption. Okay, first of all. Register to vote, defend your access, push for transparency. Unfortunately, I saw a post earlier, councilwoman Renee Chacon, which is very disrespectful, actually, what's happening in the city from the management level, you know, some, you know, things that are happening up there. So speak out against false narratives as well, like the ION Commerce City, and corrupt, corrupt entities that come into our communities. That's how we protect. Because this is not about the South and the North, this is about the rich and the poor, guys. It's about the rich and the poor that are coming in our communities, killing our democracy. Okay? We need to stand up. So vote, thank you for being, you're here, you're right. And I piggyback with all my colleagues and my neighbors here, si cierto, show up, keep doing this. And I see a lot of you guys are always there, me and you are always on all the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Democracy to me is about standing up for the residents, being the voice, and uniting the community. So I think it's really important to preserve this is by having an open door policy. When you, if I always said when I was on council before, if you see something, say something, if you want to see change, make it happen, I have an open door policy, will continue to do so. So I stand up for the residents, I love this community. Thank you.
There have been a lot of good answers here. And so democracy is listening to everyone and then executing and serving the people as a public servant. And making sure that you're actually serving the people and not being influenced by special interests. And serving the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I get everyone? No.
I can, I can hand it over to Ben at the end, you're welcome to go.
Okay. No foreign nation has ever been able to take our democratic way of life away from us. If it happens, it'll happen here. And you're the ones who can do the difference by voting. Seven years ago, I ran for the Colorado State Assembly, and I had a few acts at the Senate on. When I lost the election, I put it out in the Senate that said this. Thank you to all you who voted for me. Thank you to all you who voted for someone else. Because when you voted, you deserved our precious freedom. Read that book that gave us into mail, right? The blue one. African stuff in there you can't understand because it's legalese, but read it, look at it, know those votes are for. And when you see something that you think is a threat to our democracy with your way of life, you vote no more. And that is how we protect our homes, our families, and our nation and this city. Thank you.
Joanna. Okay. Once again, Joanna Sandoval, and I'd like to take the opportunity to say I'm the only candidate that should have had a Ward 3. So how do I define democracy, and how do I plan to preserve democracy? This question means a lot to me because as the daughter of an immigrant and also the daughter of a mother with Native American roots, you know, this is our country, we live in an amazing country where we have the opportunity to let our voice be heard and to be able to vote. And that is the most important thing that you can do is to vote. Use your voice and take it, and vote people in that are going to protect your interests and that are going to be fair, and make good choices for everyone, and make sure that this is a place that we are happy to call home.
All right, our next question is, please explain how you will process oil and gas fracking And we're going to start with Michelle.
Hello. I don't have much experience with oil and gas. I'm a native Houstonian, so I've lived around it, I grew up around it, and I understand how important it is to the community. So it's a hot topic, but I'm not against it, so I can't really say to you how I weed through the pecking order as to how we choose who we choose and how we move forward with
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I agree with Michelle, it's definitely a hot topic, and a lot of people have very diverse opinions about it. I as well do not have a great deal of experience with it, but I do understand how the city works, and I understand speaking to those that are in charge, and I understand to help you what it is that we need to do, what's the legal ramifications, what are the social ramifications, and the financial ramifications to approve or deny something. My goal would be to take in as much information, understand what it's going to do to each person, both positive and negative, and move from that. On top of that, again, my most important thing is to listen to everyone. If the majority come to those city council meetings and have a valid complaint saying they don't want us to do this, or they do want us to do this, so I'd love to listen to you. So that's how I proceed with that.
Lori.
My name's Lori Young, and the question is regarding processing oil and gas applications. We are, as a city council, we good partners with the EPA and with the state legislature to look to them for our guidelines and guidance as to how to proceed with either approving or denying those applications.
Stephanie Chavero, running for city council at large. I think there's some key considerations when something like this comes before council. We need to be looking at the application for completeness, whether or not there's any additional studies that need to be done, listening to the residents certainly, and then moving forward and making informed decisions about whether or not it's in our community's best interest. Thank you.
Environmental concerns are real, and they affect everybody in Commerce City. In order to process these oil and gas applications, we need to find a balance. I know that in order to attract business, we have to work with and have a dialogue, but I also know that oil and gas pollutes our communities, and we want to work with you to find that balance, as I said. My goal is to make environmental stewardship practical and achievable. Thank you.
Commerce City passed a climate emergency. I'll ask you one thing. If I tell you there's an emergency right now, are you going to walk out of here? We normally are going to run out of here, right? A climate emergency, then when you think about fracking, okay, the housing impacts of fracking, I, let me remind my neighbors, I started working here in the North to fight off fracking with our neighbors, okay? That's coming right to you. They want their mineral rights. And they're not going to stop, okay? That is, that is an offense to human rights and public safety. Okay, so we need to follow the law. Right now, the state of Colorado, we have the 2030, 2050 EPA, we need to follow the also Commerce City emergency climate, the climate emergency. So strong restrictions against fracking, everybody knows that. I am here in the South, the Commerce City, next to the South, and next to the refinery. You don't want that to happen here. You don't want that to happen here. Thank you.
Regarding, regarding the oil and fracking applications, you know, face it, like I said, I'm a registered nurse, family nurse practitioner, so I stand up for fighting for the residents' health and safety, so I make sure that applications are, but I would learn more how is it overall going to affect the community, so I would have to learn more about it, but I would make sure, first of all, it's best for the community and the health and safety of our residents, and I'll stand up for them first.
So ask anyone who has to live with fracking next to them because they didn't have a choice. And they will tell you that it does not belong next to anyone who is living in their place of residency, it doesn't belong near schools, hospitals, and so we don't want to repeat what we have in the South with the slum corps, we should learn from that. And so it's time to transition, it's time to move into the next phase of energy generation. Thank you.
He's not here.
Me again? Anytime these issues come before any legislative body, there's a ton of lobbyists, people from the industries of life who come in and they will tell you why you should do this. There will be a lot of environmentalists who will come in and tell you why you shouldn't. Our job in the city council is to listen, make a decision on what you have heard, what you have been able to read and search. Go online, find out what's going on in cities, counties, countries, where they were doing these things. If they had negative results, okay. If the results were positive, so much for better. But the point is to listen to the people who want to tell you what they have learned. And that's what I would do. I would sit there, listen to the lobby, the environmentalists, and anyone else who wanted to come in and speak on the issue. Take notes, evaluate what was said. Thank you.
Okay, once again, Joanna Sandoval, running for Ward 3. How do I process oil and gas applications? And I will process it just like I process anything else, and especially when I'm not familiar with this particular topic in detail. Because I do not claim to be an expert in this area, I would spend a lot of time doing research, just as I have, with the city and the city council as well. And so I would follow state legislature, I would also, you know, follow the Environmental Justice Task Force, and then also work with EPA, and then also listen to the voice of the community and what leads are there. And so that's how I make the decision. I don't have any special interest in any area, and so my, mine is going to be logical decision-making.
Jose.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you bring all stakeholders together, right? And we listen and learn from opposite sides to the middle, and then we bring the residents. The city has an application, I think we have to review that, you know, in a timely fashion so we can know what it is, and if we have to change it, if we have to keep it the same. But we bring stakeholders and learn and listen, and then go through the city application process and stick with that. And that includes federal, state, local ordinances and laws. So bring everybody together, listen, learn, and see what's best for our communities. And I think the residents have to be involved because we live here, right? Businesses come and go, but we're staying here, so I think that's a huge part of that process.
Thank you. Did I get everybody? You know, Jake, I have you down as Jake, and I have Jacob down as Jacob, and Jacob's not here, but you are, so when I say Jake, that's you. All right, the next question is, what are your All right, the next question is, what are your plans to lower the cost burden of metro districts and/or give residents more decision power? I will start with Ryan.
I appreciate that question, I'm definitely equally qualified to answer it. I've been fighting this battle for three years now, trying to get metro district taxes down, the building down. Whether it's even company or private, it's a possible agreement they have between master and servant districts. We do have some issues with the ability of the city to not change existing metro districts. And to be very clear, that once the service plan has been put in place, it can only be modified by the metro district and the city's agreement together. So to take down current ones is very difficult. Now, the upcoming ones, there was a recent moratorium that was keeping metro districts from forming, while the city reviewed it and defined the issues that they could resolve, the metro districts currently had, that moratorium's been taken away with many current obstacles existing there. I would like to get those taken care of before they fall through.
Lori?
My name is Lori Young, the question was in regards to the cost of metro district, trying to bring those down, and also how do we maintain the voice of the community? Our current, some of our current metro districts are over 25 years old, and they're very antiquated systems, so much so that the state legislature and even the city of Commerce City went through a very advanced progressive metro district reform, and that brought in the voice of our residents. Every metro district is required to hold an annual meeting and an annual budget review. So as residents in your metro district, I would encourage you to seek out your metro district board of directors, find out when that annual meeting is, review and approve the budget on an annual basis.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Trivio, running for city council at large. Metro districts were intended to be a tool used for redevelopment, and municipalities have been put in this position as, you know, it's really truly a statewide issue that needs advocacy at that level. However, Commerce City did, as Ms. Young mentioned, perform an audit on all 73 metro districts here. And as a result of that, you know, that was kind of the extent of what could be done. So once these, you know, come up, the service plans come up for approval during that process, I would look at them on a case-by-case basis, do any type of negotiations at that point, make sure that, you know, we have those stringent service plans. Because after we approve those, there is really little, if anything, that city council can do, okay? So I would make sure to really review and analyze them at that stage, because it is critical and can have a significant impact for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not easy. We need to hear from you, like it's been mentioned before. Take a look at those reports, take a look at those meetings, let us know what your thoughts are. Because you deserve transparency and fairness in regards to those decisions. And I want to push for clear communication from those districts and accountability from developers. Thank you.
Jake?
Let's get back to listening. Finding out what goes wrong. And it would not be a bad idea to go through the entire budgets, find out what things they spent on what. I would never vote yes on something that would raise property tax, sales tax, anything else. The people are paying enough, so trimming that would not be a bad idea. Thank you.
Lucy?
Stephen Asadas, and I will be honest, this is one part that I'm not that familiar, but I do know this, that we need to empower homeowners and get residents elected to their own metro districts. Transparency first, because also, guys, we know that metro districts are created by developers, and we know what's up with developers and what they're here for, right? So smart financing, we know, push to refinance high-interest developer debt, no bank checks for developers. Set milli caps and stop excessive borrowing.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Living in the south area of the city, there's only one metro district, and I know there's, most of the homes in the north have several metro districts. So this is something while I was previously on council, that I'm continuing to learn about and educate myself, that it's all about representing the residents. So I would work with the residents who are on those boards to find out what is best for the residents and our community, and work with our other council members and our mayor to fight for the residents. Thank you.
Joanna?
Okay, Joanna Sandoval, Ward Three. How will I lower the cost burden of our metro districts and also ensure residents more decision-making power? This is important. This is where you, as residents, need to get involved so that you have full advantage to be able to make the decisions on your board and what happens in your community. And so that's really where you can lower the taxes. And so my job as, you know, as elected council, hopefully, would be to help educate homeowners on how to be able to do that and how to be able to make the decisions, such as being able to refinance the bonds, that, you know, sometimes you have no decision-making to be able to, you know, on how much is being taken out in the development of the community. And so knowing how the process works, getting involved, and being able to make the decisions for your community where you can refinance the bonds to where they're lower, you're able to take out money and invest in your community so that you have nice fencing and nice landscaping and no trip hazards, is how you do it.
Thank you. Michelle?
This is a great question. I live in North Reunion. We pay $10,000 annually in taxes. And it has a lot to do with this metro district that I don't have enough information to know how, if and when elected, I'm going to fight to figure a way to make this fair and balanced for everyone in our community. But what I have realized is, it starts with the HOA board. You have to know who you have elected, who you have voted for, and how hard they're going to fight the district for you. Thank you.
Is that everybody? No. Ozzy?
Thank you. You know, this is where the residents need to get involved and educated on it. And I think it's our duty as city council, other stakeholders, developers, to educate our residents and really be transparent and show them what it is. But it's an opportunity for residents to be on those boards and to learn more about what metro districts are, what the benefits of them are, and if you have a balanced metro district. But bringing all stakeholders and educating our folks. But the city should do a better job of having these town hall meetings and really help us understand, or those that don't know, help them understand. But that takes a partnership even with the developers that are building in our city, you know? It has to be all of us, so yeah.
Thank you. All right, the next question is? Oh, hi. Christine, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't want to answer this question.
You know, people have to understand that metro districts are their own government, and there has to be oversight, and that means getting involved and speaking up when you see things that don't make sense and you wonder why and where the money is going. And, yeah, we're stuck with them. And there are some beautiful neighborhoods that were built without a metro district, so they aren't necessary, there are other tools and tool products to develop. And I think we need to look at those going forward, but right now it's to have a watchful eye on the metro districts if you are in one.
The next question is, how do you plan to prioritize spending and be transparent so residents can see where our tax dollar is going? What approach will you take regarding road improvements? That might be two questions altogether. Yeah, how do you plan to prioritize spending and be transparent so the residents can see where our tax money is going? And what are you going to do with road improvements? And we're going to start with Lori.
My name is Lori Young, the question is, how, as a city council member, am I going to prioritize spending, offer transparency into our budget of how we're spending our money, and also a discussion about roads and infrastructure? I've heard a lot of concerns from citizens, people who live in our community, about public safety and about infrastructure. I've heard a lot of concerns about lighting and sidewalks. I think the priority, based on some of the concerns that I've heard, would be public safety and infrastructure. In terms of transparency, as a city council person, it's every one of our jobs to be transparent and to be communicating concerns.
So I would prioritize spending on safety, infrastructure, core services, and non-essential services first. For traffic and infrastructure, specifically on roads, I would push for road repair more frequently, better traffic planning, expanding transit options, building safer sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike paths. Thank you.
Jake?
Well, everything I do is going to be transparent. There's no way of hiding anything that the city council does, nor would I try. But spending, this is what the question's involving in the room. There are a lot of roads in the city I would love to see repaired. And I would probably vote to have it done if it comes up in front of the city council, or I could get it up myself. And there's a lot of other things where, you know, spending might be unnecessary or wasteful. And the point is, like I said, you listen, you watch, you learn, and then you vote. Thank you.
Lucy?
Can you get the question, can you?
Sure.
How do you plan to prioritize spending and be transparent so that residents can see where our tax dollar is going? What approach will you take regarding road improvements? First of all, the I-270 expansion is going on, and I would like to invite you to that now, because we get involved. Right now, the largest infrastructure bill within our lifetimes, in the Biden administration. Through that infrastructure bill, we're getting new bridges and sidewalks and highways here in Commerce City. Be involved, definitely going back to the transparency. I would like to audit my own city, honestly, I want to see where our money has been going the last 20 years. I want to see where, who are those special edges? Who's trying to, who control our city from management to our government? I want to see where that money is going. Continue to do town halls and show more for me, come with me, and give me your three minutes in there. Please don't forget to give me your three minutes.
I'll give you more time.
Christine?
So one of the biggest responsibilities of any city council member is to be a fiscal watchdog. And that is to keep the budget in mind at all times. And sometimes you get influenced to spend money on things that might not be necessary. Say we get back to basics, we take care of our roads, public safety, it's a no-brainer. And so we just really have to watch where we're being asked to spend money, and we have to learn how to say no sometimes. Actually, all the time, if necessary.
Joanna?
All right, Joanna Sandoval. Question is how I prioritize spending and transparency and also focus on roads and infrastructure? So I work during the day for the federal government, and what I know and understand and work so hard for is to specifically be very transparent, because it's not the city's money, it's not the state's money, it's not the federal government's money. This is our money, we're the taxpayers, and so we're working for the taxpayer. And so everything should be wholeheartedly transparent. You should be able to have access and go into the site and see where the money is going, so that it's not a mystery. Because at the end of the day, it's your money.
Thank you. Ozzy?
Yeah, I mean, I think transparency works in all ways, right? Especially in the age of technology where we can have dashboards and people can look things up. I think that's a huge pro for us to have in Commerce City to see where everything's going. The other thing is, I think we have to listen to the residents, what are your guys' priorities, right? Public safety is huge everywhere, that's something we need to focus. The roads we drive, right? I drive right in Boulevard every day, and it's like hit a pothole, hit a pothole. And so we have to look at what roads are being driven more and prioritize that. So I think public safety, roads, but being transparent and showing our residents the easy. We all have computers in our hands now where we can look things up, and we have to lead that as a city council or a government to say, hey, here's our dashboard, this is what we're spending money on. Here's our feedback also, should we be spending money on that? What else do you guys want to do?
Thank you. Michelle?
I'm running on change and transparency. The first thing that I would like to do is build a better relationship between the finance manager and the city attorney. Because when I look at the meetings, I want transparency as well. We're talking about millions of dollars of taxpayer money. And when asked, I hear council asking, and they're getting pushback. So there has to be something, we have to become friends here. They have to be more transparent. When asked, what does this mean? Give it to me in layman's terms. That way, I can turn around and explain it to the community. Well, this is how your money was spent. And that would be my first goal, because that's what I'm asking for, is transparency. $10K annually is a lot. I'd like to know where it's going. Thank you very much.
Ryan?
So it's not my money, it's our money. I look at it, it's no different than my household budget. I sit with my wife before we go through and decide what we're going to do with it, and we make decisions based on that. We always put priorities first and the most important things, and go forward from there. It would be nice to have a shiny object from time to time, sometimes we just can't do it. And that's how I would like to treat my previous spending with the city council as well. We have things to take care of, public safety and infrastructure are two basic things, and we have fallen short in that recently, it looks like. So I would like to work with you and find out what your priorities are, bring them to us, and listen to everyone that we have to hear, what we need to do and how we're going to do that, and then make the decision where we're going to spend that money. I definitely think it should be very, very easy for you to see where your money's being spent, because like I said, it's not my money, it's not the city's money, it's your money. So having the ability to see that easily is So having the ability to see that easily is important. I'd like to put a dashboard together on the city site that would make it very easy to see that instead of giving up the legislature. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Trivio, City Council at Large. First, we must prioritize essential services that impact public safety and infrastructure. It is the foundation that enables everything else to function, right? And so as a body, we should always be looking at things also through an equitable lens, you know, where we can have the greatest community impact per dollar. Programs serving, you know, our communities that are essential. You know, in terms of road improvements, I think we need to develop clear criteria. So that way, we understand how to prioritize which roads or, you know, other infrastructures to improve. That includes looking at roads with high accidents or visibility, contagious intersections or other conditions. Then we need to also be looking at what is going to cost more if we continue to delay, right? That is really, really important. Thank you.
Joanna?
I already answered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I did forget self-defense.
Kristi?
Jim, please. Thank you. Once again, it's all about the safety of the residents in our community. So I would prioritize spending to see what keeps the residents safe and everyone safe in our community. As far as road improvements, I proudly say while I was previously on city council, I fought to make sure our, we had four-way stops. We had, I fought for the residents to make sure Commerce City had the flashing solar stop signs. So I would continue to do so to make sure whatever I have to do to keep the roads safe and the residents safe, and that's how I would prioritize the spending as well. Thank you.
Oh, 800. Okay, did you hear this, David? Okay. You're doing a great job, Candace. Next question. How would you unite Commerce City as one South-North, all is one city? And we'll start with Jose.
Sorry, I didn't write the question for Jake. I think learning our history, right? I love storytelling, and I think we have to do a better job of teaching and learning and speaking our history of where Karmar City comes from. Not all of us have been here as long as myself. My wife's family's been here since 1952, right? And so a lot of our northern range neighbors just moved in and have no clue of the great things we have in the core city. So I think we have to put it out there. Some folks don't even know we have a historical society. Check it out, there's some cool stuff in there. So I think we have to promote that stuff and so they can buy into the history of the great city that we live in. So that's how I would definitely go out there and talk. I always tell about my story and why we came to Karmar City and a proud alumni from Adam City High School in 98, and now my son. So I think going, and we're up in the northern range, right? So I tell my neighbors about the core city.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Trivio, City Council at Large. I'm actually already starting to have these conversations as I'm engaging with our community. It's very important because there is division in our community. There's been this North versus South mentality, and that we cannot have that any longer, right? We are one beautiful city. Each community has unique issues that we must be able to look at from a different perspective. I truly believe that, you know, speaking with the residents, we need to make sure that they do understand what our history is. Again, the historical society, I learned a lot, you know, in my visits there. And so I would really, you know, encourage folks to visit the center as well. And that we also keep up with what we are putting into our history. Thank you.
My name is Lori Young, and the question is regarding uniting Commerce City as one city. And I really appreciate the answers that Mr. Gordiola and Mr. Gyo gave about really recognizing and acknowledging our history. I've had the distinct pleasure of being able to work in the Adams 14 School District, in the Hope Center, but also in the Foundation. I have met the most incredible people who are so proud of their city and so proud of graduating from Adam City High School. And what I would really love to see and encourage is, again, really talking more about our history, how we came to be, and how, you know, the North Range has come to be. We're an incredible city with lots of diversity.
Joanna?
Thank you for your answer at Large. I wish I could give a broader answer for this. It would be easier for me to defend it, and I'm sure it looks better for all of you. I think the biggest part we have is we have unique challenges that aren't being solved. The North definitely has some unique challenges that are very different from the South. We need to focus on fixing the natural problems in the city so that we can all unify together. If we're all fighting our own challenges, it makes it very difficult to be able to be a part of one community. I think a lot of things have been, like I said, shining out there past my last answer. We're given a lot of things to kind of pacify us and deal with it as we are. But I really think we need to fix our problems in the city so we can all be one and not have to set this North versus South problem. We can all fight our problems together. We have one unique challenge all of us have together. I think that's how we action before as a city.
Michelle?
We need to continue to work to preserve the South. We have to realize that we are an ecosystem. We have the wealthy, we have the median, and we have the Lord income people. We can't do it without each other. We need to work together to respect each other and grow our communities together. There's no one versus the other. It's just, I guess, the equality issues that I'd like to work on. Thank you.
Kristi?
So I think we just have to continue to grow our circles, and that is get to know each other more. Develop relationships. And if you know somebody from the South, introduce them to somebody from the North. We have boards and commissions where we have a mixture of people from both areas of the city. And people are going to know each other. And I'm seeing more unification as we travel this journey together. So I think it's getting much better that we're more unified. And again, we just have to get to know each other and empower each other in making the city great.
Lucy?
Thank you. Protect public education. Our education system is under attack right now by privatizers. Our public schools are the heart of our cities and our communities. 27J Adams 14. Share your stories. Share your stories. Just talk to each other. Give me your three minutes. Give us your three minutes and share your stories with us. And again, I piggyback with all my colleagues about our history, our culture, and all this. But most importantly, you guys, protect public education. Thank you.
Jake?
You're on.
I'm probably the only person here who is so old that I watched the Civil Horizon in 1950.
You're a treasure.
Good. In the army in the mid-sixties, we formed a group called MUSC-FRE, Military Undercover Society for Future Eventually Quality. Every one of us could have been court martians for that, it was against the rules. How do you get equality? You treat everybody the same. It's that simple. It doesn't take 60 seconds for me to tell you that. You treat everyone the same. Any issue that comes before us, regardless of the person who is talking about it, should be, would be treated the same. Everyone meets you the same. You come to us, you talk to them. You treat it the same. That's how we appreciate it. Very well. Thank you.
Lieutenant?
Thank you. I have to say, being here my entire life, I lived up in the South, and when my parents moved here, the roads were actually dirt. Around here wasn't even a vision. So I remember also growing up and the residents in the North fought to try to change the name of the North of Commerce City. And my father, while he was on council, said, no, we're all one Commerce City. We're all, whether we're North, South, we're all Commerce Cities. So it's a matter of continuing to fight for that vision, no matter where you live, we're all Commerce City. We're all the same individuals, and we all deserve the same safe and healthy place to live, period. So thank you.
Oh, 800.
Hello? So there's been a sense that Commerce City is two distinct places, and that's not true. In fact, we share the same values: safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and affordable housing.
It's not.
For me, that means making sure the city resources are split equally between both North and South. It means the community events that bring all of us together, where people work side by side. That's how we build unity, not just with words, but with action. We're one Commerce City. Thank you.
Is that everybody? No, I'm sorry, Joanna?
All right, everyone, Joanna Sandoval. The question is, how would you unite the city, the North and the South? So there's, going through this whole process, I've learned a lot that how diverse the city is. However, how do you unite people? Food, history, culture, and collaboration. Had the opportunity to go down to the Hispanic Heritage Event and spend a lot of time dancing, eating food, and meeting a lot of people that I did not know before, learning a little bit about the history of Commerce City, which I found absolutely fascinating. My daughter had fun coloring the booklet, and I had fun actually reading through it and learning about Commerce Cities. So to me, this process has given me a great understanding of the city as a whole. And actually, I've never felt more connected to the city than I have during this process. And so that's how you unite people: food, culture, history, and collaboration. It's pretty simple in that aspect, so thank you.
We have time for one more question. Have you taken money from developers and/or family members that work with the developers? If so, how would you guarantee the voters that these wouldn't be more influences than the will of the people? And we'll start with Kristi.
No, I have not, and I don't intend to, so.
Thank you. Lucy?
Uh, sorry? I didn't hear your question.
Have you taken money from developers or have family members that work with developers? If so, how would you guarantee the voters that these won't be more influences than the will of the people?
Absolutely not. I have not taken no money from developers or dark money, none of that stuff. Do I guarantee? Well, definitely we have to show our campaign finances. And I say my work speaks for myself. Thank you.
Jake? Have you taken money from developers and/or family members that work with developers? If so, how would you guarantee the voters that these won't be more influences than the will of the people?
I'm lucky I get money from my relatives. No, I'm not taking money from developers. In fact, I haven't gotten much money from anybody. If developers offered me money, I'm not aware of any reason I should have taken it. Because regardless of who might give me a few dollars, I'd still be voting in the interest of the city and the people in it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
No, I have not, and I do not intend to. I'm running my campaign with my faith, family, friends, and the residents that know me. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, 800.
Hello, right there. No, I have not taken money from developers or special interests, and I don't intend to do so. I'm here, as I've said before, to provide you a voice and represent you wherever I can. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Trivio, at Large City Council. Yes, I have, and I'm very transparent about that. Our campaign finance reports are available online, and I will continue to adhere to all campaign finance reporting requirements. I also want to preface this by saying, our maximum contributions are $400. As somebody who has lived and earned everything that I have worked hard for, I promise you that $400 is not going to influence any decision that I'm going to make that is going to be in the best interest of our community, okay? I've received almost two times the more individual contributions from everyday people like me and you, right? Who believe in the vision I have and what is best, you know, who want to invest in our community. Again, this goes back to collaboration, and we do have developers who are stakeholders in this community that simply have not had a voice in a while. And I want to be able to come back to the table and have these conversations because we all want more things, we all want more amenities. Thank you.
Lori?
My name is Lori Young. The question is very direct. Have I received campaign funds from developers? Yes, I have. I have a vision also for the city, that it will continue to be the city that will grow, where we can be a city that attracts new businesses, a city where we have places for our kids to come back and live, where we have entertainment options here. I welcome anyone and everyone who has a common vision to jump on and be part of my campaign. And I guarantee, as a city council person, my first responsibility is to my constituents, my taxpayers, that's you, I'm accountable to you, I am transparent to you. Thank you.
Michelle?
Hello? No, I have not taken any developer money, and no, I do not have any family members working for any developers. I don't know much about, you know, saying yes or no, but sometimes developers can donate money or offer money in ways that will benefit the community. So I can't say to you that I won't accept developers' funding, but I do have a people's first approach. So if I ever did, it's gonna, that's what I'll take into consideration.
Okay. Joanna, did I get you?
No.
Joanna?
Joanna Sandoval, running for Board Three. And for me, I will say that money's a tool, and so I will accept money from anybody that wants to give it to me. So if any of you would love to donate, I'll take that too.
So if any of you would love to donate, I will take that too. So I may have definitely accepted it from developers. I may have definitely accepted it from anybody that's given it to me. So I cannot confirm absolutely everybody that's donated because I just gained access to the site today to be able to look at every individual donor. But hopefully that answers the question. Yes, I have. And I know I don't understand what the concern is on that one. So, all right.
Okay. Is that everybody?
No.
No.
Yes, I have. And it doesn't change who Uncle Sam Ardeola is, who's been here since nineteen eighty-three and continues to live here. It doesn't change my mind of who I'm representing, which is my neighbor, my family, my dad, my sister, you guys. So I have. But, you know, I would disagree with folks. It doesn't change my views, and it doesn't change who I am.
All right. It's now time... Joanna? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, I have not taken developer money. And I totally stated that I would be doing so. In full transparency, I did receive a one hundred dollar donation on credit card. And when I found out it was from a developer, I did refund that money. I won't have to show up in my own financial report. But in full transparency, I will bring it up here. My reasoning is not that I think everyone is bad at developing. It's that... It's that...
Listen here, you can't hear me.
I apologize. It's not that they're all bad. It's just that I work for... I work for the citizens of Commerce City. It would be difficult for me to take a contribution to someone who doesn't live here, that does in Commerce City. I have taken two contributions, and both of them were in Commerce City because my job is to represent you, not to represent people outside of our city. And that's my reasoning for not taking outside money.
And now, we'll have closing comments from the candidates. And we will start with Kristy.
I made it through it, yeah. So I want to continue doing good work. The first four years, I felt like it was a lot of really examining what was happening and making decisions that will lay a foundation for what the future is. And sometimes that's looking at something and saying, "How is this going to impact our community? Is it going to be negative? Is it going to be positive?" And so making big decisions like that. And I think, as I said before, now we're at a crossroads. And this is where we have to learn to work with all the stakeholders, the people who have land here and want to develop. And I think we all need to work together as a community to provide the community that is promised to everyone, a quality community for a lifetime. And I think if we all work together, then we can make that happen. So I'm Kristy Douglas. I'm running for reelection. And as an At-Large candidate, I'm very passionate about this community, and I want to see it become the community that we all deserve. Thank you.
Lucy? How many minutes we have? Close.
Public banks, please. Public banks will keep the corruption away. This is the third time I run. Okay? I have been here... And actually, I'm gonna... Please talk to me for those three minutes. I'm gonna let you know when I decline this meeting today. That many. There was leaders in this organization, the Chamber of Commerce, that have disrespected me for so long. I was at an I-270 meeting, and I was disrespected by a leader in this Chamber of Commerce. Okay? It's not fair. Okay? No se vale. The Eye of Commerce City, all these evil things for community, like these women also and these gentlemen here, that all they want to do is represent you. I've already brought millions of dollars to my community. I brought new infrastructure, solar infrastructure, new schools, past the levee. So I mean, I don't need to prove... I need to hear your voice. Your voice. Okay? But don't let outside interest... I'm in nobody's pockets, okay? I'm in nobody's pockets. And I'm not a delivery girl either, for nobody. Okay? I'm here for you. I want to hear your voice. Your voice. Okay? Give me your three minutes. Two minutes is not enough. Okay? I have the whole day for you. The next few days, I'm all yours. I want to hear your voice. Okay? And don't let outside interest get in your pockets. Okay? Get smart. Be smart voters. Don't let that happen, please. We're tired. Look what's happening in Aurora, I think, and throughout the whole nation. And in the Capitol. We don't want that. Let the working people advance. Let us get ahead. And we are united, by the way. Commerce City is not separated. We have been united. I know who's been telling you guys that lie. Because Commerce City is one. We've always been one. Thank you. Vote for Lucy Monino or vote... This is our cultura. I'm the girl, I'm the girl. Gracias.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Trivio, candidate for At-Large City Council. I didn't get to finish my opening, so this is a good time to circle back to talk about my key priorities, about why I'm running. I promise to lead and, you know, move forward, move this city forward with pragmatic solutions relating to affordability, infrastructure, public safety, you know, better economic development. We can't obviously build a new grocery store. Council can't do that. But we can certainly create conditions, right? That we're welcoming these, you know, commercial and retail establishments into our community. I've been hearing for many, many years, you know, that we want more, especially that here in the northern range. I'm running At-Large because I care about this entire city, and I'm tired of seeing the divisiveness. I really do believe that I have the ability, through my professional and lived experience, in understanding the unique issues in all of our communities. And so I'm looking forward to earning your vote and serving all of you and listening to, you know, your concerns. If you would like to meet and have coffee, I am all for that. Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you. I think you seemed to come out this evening. It means a lot to me that you came to hear what I always had to say. We're running here for City Council. I hope it came through that I'm running to put the residents first and not outside interests in our city. I really think it's important that we put people who live here and work here every day as their priority in City Council. We're at a crossroads as a city. Growth is coming, and the question is whether we shape it in a way that benefits our families and neighborhoods or whether we let it run ahead of us and then get stuck with paying the price afterwards. I believe we can have schools, roads, and public infrastructure that keep up with the pace of growth if we stay focused on accountability and smart planning. I've spent the last several years rolling up my sleeves on tough issues, including high property taxes, transparency in complicated metro districts, and making sure residents have a voice in decisions that affect them. This is the same approach I'll bring to City Council: doing the homework, listening to the residents, and standing firm when it matters. At the end of the day, this election isn't about me. It's not about any of us. It's about the future of Commerce City. I'm proud to be a part of this community, and I want to ensure that our city grows in a way that we can all be proud of it. I'd be honored to earn your trust, your support, and your vote. Thank you.
Michelle? So without you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time and trust. I want to remind you that my purpose is rooted in service and faith in our community, and we will grow stronger together. I'm committed to addressing the issues that matter most: public safety, fighting racism, promoting transparency, supporting our seniors, and ensuring every voice has been heard. My vision for the community, the community's future, includes expanding our neighborhoods through collaboration with builders, partnering with the Chamber to grow our local economy, and working with the Board of Education to elevate our schools to be the best in the state. Thank you for your time. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Jose?
Yeah, again, thank you guys for coming out. You know, these are great events, and hopefully, you know, we can promote it to have all three ballrooms. You know, I'm not moving. I'm raising my son here. And I just want him to have a good... And he has just a good time like I did when there was thirteen thousand residents, right? In the eighties and nineties. I think we believe we have to bring everybody together, all the stakeholders, whether it's a business, residents, developers, landowners. We all have to have a seat at the table and have just right dialogue and discussion. And I think that's what's been lost in so many arenas. And that's what I'm about. You know, I just want to bring community. I love Commerce City, the core. But I think it's just coming together as a city and seeing how we're gonna move forward so when my son goes off to college and comes back, he can still live in this same city.
Joanna?
Joanna Sandoval. And I thank you all for coming out. I just want to reemphasize the reasons why I'm running, not because I have any personal agenda other than to just give up my time. My mom and my husband are here, and they're upholding me. And I come home and daily tell them everything that's been going on, every single thing that I've had and every discussion I've had. And today, I spent the entire day volunteering at Turnberry. You guys are lucky you got me showered and presentable because I was busting my butt. But ultimately, the main reason why I'm running is for economic development, for opportunity here in Commerce City. Because that is the backbone of our economy. And small business gives everybody the opportunity to grow. And so collaboration, transparency, making the city good. So to me, that's all I invite, is just the opportunity to come to Commerce City and bring commerce to Commerce City and really live up to our meaning. If you'd like to learn more about where I stand on any issue, what I've done, or anything about me, visit my website. It's joannasandoval.com. I have all my information on there. I'm an open book. What you see is what you get. And I am full of integrity and ethics. Nothing more. I am a Daniel Sven scholar, and that's the one thing that I hold very close to my heart because that's the one thing that's been embedded in us, is ethics and integrity, giving back to your community and being a leader. And I will not shirk on that. I wholeheartedly am an open book to all of you. So thank you. Once again, Joanna Sandoval, Commerce City candidate for Ward Three. Thank you.
Candidate who moved up to our expectations. Oh, sorry, Jennifer? Jennifer? Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you. I want... I want to say I want to give back. No one knows the city better than me. I, like I said, am proudly Commerce City in my entire life. I want to give back to the residents and get back involved. That's why I'm running again. I joined representing for four years while I was on City Council. So I want to empower the residents of Commerce City, continue to be their voice, their advocate, and work for this city to see what they need. So that's why I'm encouraging you to vote for me. It's Jennifer, Jennifer Allen Thomas. I have a website, but I prefer a phone call. Come meet with me. You can't know a person better than just being yourself and finding out who they are. I'm for seniors, affordable housing, and my biggest thing that I repeat again is maintaining the health and safety of the residents of Commerce City and being their voice, empowering, and uplifting the city. So please, if you want questions or anything, like I said, I have an open door policy. And I'm all about being the voice for Commerce City. And that's Jennifer Allen Thomas for Commerce City At-Large. And thanks, everyone, for being here tonight.
Jake, you're on.
Probably a lot of you noticed I'm a bit hard of hearing. No one ever says they can't hear me. These two wonderful people have been writing questions down for me. And I appreciate that. They're wonderful people. This is one of those ones. We can compete, but we can be friendly. We can disagree, and we can be friendly still. As I said in the opening, I have voted for Commerce City and probably the most friendly city I've ever been in my life. I'll be proud to serve it and to serve you. Sixty years ago, I served Uncle Sam at making a hundred dollars a month. But Uncle Sam sent me to Europe when I saw a law. I learned a lot. I've learned a lot here. I've learned a lot in this room. Something that you sitting here probably didn't realize is the amount of attention you were all paid to us. You were listening to everything everyone said. That is why you, being intelligent voters, you make up your minds based upon the things that are important to you. And I did hope that if these are important to you, will be equally important to me. And that is all I can say. Probably didn't think up as much as I can, but that to me is enough. And thank you.
Lori?
My name's Lori Young. I'm running for City Council At-Large. As I said, I've lived here for twenty years. I raised my boys here. I was involved in MOX groups in our church community. I helped start Community Uplift Partnership, which now operates for you in Coffee House, Grayhound Grounds, Tazza in the Adams County Building. That legacy continues to grow and expand based on a small vision that a small group of us had. I'm now the executive director of the Adams for Teen Education Foundation and proudly get to watch more legacy grow and develop with every scholarship that we give, with every teacher grant, with every leadership Commerce City class that graduates every year. And that's what I bring. And accumulation of all of that experience, all of that leadership, all of these people that I've met, that I've gotten the opportunity to work with and get to know, to bring to City Council, to be your City Council representative, to be your voice on City Council. Thank you. Lori Young, Commerce City, City Council At-Large. I'd love to ask for your vote.
Alejandro?
I believe in Commerce City. I believe in all of you. I believe in what we can accomplish together. Together, we can grow our city in a way that strengthens neighborhoods, creates opportunities for all of us, and builds trust between the residents and the city itself. I will bring commitment and energy to help us lead us there. If there's one thing that I want you to get out of this, is to get out there and vote. Thank you for being here, and thank you for believing in the future we can build together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for your participation. Audience, you were wonderful. You followed the rules like I had sent them to you, too.